I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Crestwood Board of Directors for Thursday, January 20th, 2022. Please stand for Pledge of Allegiance. Rule call.
Mrs. Bibla, here. Mr. Brogna?
Present.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Here.
Mr. Macri?
Present.
Mrs. Spath?
Here.
Mr. Swank?
Here.
Mrs. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Haddix?
Here.
And Mr. Boone.
Here.
Nine members.
Executive sessions were held prior to the regular board meeting on December 16th, 2021, and January 13th, that's not on your agenda, but also on January 13th in regard to contracts, personnel, safety, and active or pending litigation. When we get to the regular meeting, we will be seeking approval of the minutes. Oh, and tonight, yeah, an executive session. I thought that was in there. We'll be seeking approval of the minutes of the regular board meetings of December 3rd, 16th, and 24th, and approval of the treasurer's reports. At this time, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Mr. President. Thank you, members of the Board of Education, attendees, as well as those watching from home. Thank you for joining our January 20th board meeting, our first board meeting of 2022. I'd like to mention our Why Teach app. The Why Teach application is up and running. We used this app last year to a great response, looking for even a greater response this year. Why Teach app, want to make our families aware, speak to your children about that. Students, helping students, students tutoring students, very, very happy to be able to provide this resource. Our Crestwood app is now up and running as well. Big kudos to Mr. Stucker, Mr. Blanchard, our tech department. It's a big undertaking to develop and launch your own app. It is available on Google Play, it is available at Apple Store. If you need any assistance, please contact your building administrator. They will get us in touch with our tech team. Finally, if I may, big agenda tonight, looking forward to it. Some changes coming to the district. And I want to assure the public that I will be available and I will be working to the very last day of my tenure here. I fully am looking forward to helping transition the next superintendent of schools. I look forward to helping with the business management position that will be open. But for tonight, I think it's more about a very important community member that is no longer with us, Mr. Dr. Ziegler. And so, to me, the emotions of tonight is for his family, for his children, his loved ones, his friends, so many of you who know and have spent so much time with Dr. Ziegler, have only known him for a short time, and I've got a hole in my heart, as I know so many of you do. So, I want to assure his family and his friends that our district was prepared when we came back to school to offer counseling to any staff member, any student, and any community member. Again, I know this is something we are struggling with, and we will for a long, long time. So, if I can, Mr. President, if I could have a moment of silence for Dr. Ziegler. Mr. President, with that, I yield back the floor.
Thank you. Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Other than what was discussed in executive session, I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. A reminder, public testimony on agenda items. You are limited, our public guest, to three minutes, and you must state your name, spell your last name and address, and if you are speaking for an organization, name and identify that organization. Also, when we get to non-agenda items, there is a three-minute time limit, and the same applies as far as name, address, and organization. We will now go into our committee reports. Financial planning, Mr. Brogna.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the financial planning committee, I'll be seeking approval for items one through eight.
Comments or questions from the board? Or the public? Transportation, Mrs. Spath?
Yes, I'll be seeking approval for item one, A and B.
Questions or input from the board? Or the public? Policy, Mr. Macri.
Yes, I'll be recommending consideration and approval of A and B.
Questions from the board? Or the public? Human resources, Mrs. Bibla?
I'll be seeking approval of items one through 10.
Questions or comments from the board? If not, at this time, I would like to make a comment. Tonight, the board will be voting on the acceptance of the resignations of our business manager and superintendent. Get a little emotional, I think. These two men have been rock-solid supporters of this district since they have been on board. Both have been accessible to all board members at all hours of the day and night. Mr. Bard has led us from the brink of bankruptcy to more stable ground. The offer made to him was a fantastic one which Crestwood could not match. I told him this is like losing a member of your family, seeing one of your children leave home, which saddened you, but also beaming with excitement for their success. We wish Peter nothing but the best in his future endeavors, and rest assured, he will work to the end of his time here to ensure a smooth transition as we enter the budget-making process. As for Mr. Mahalik, I told him he had the starring role in the movie It's a Wonderful Life, but he chose to leave us anyway. I feel in two short years, I have gained a lifelong friend, one who has guided this district through what has probably been the most challenging years in its history. His care for all of the students of the district and the entire mountaintop community goes unchallenged. He has kept the entire board informed of all decisions, major or minor, every step of the way. He has helped to build the staffing level to where it needed to be for the district to be as successful as possible. He has contacted me during late evenings, early mornings, on weekends, holidays, when major crises arose. In fact, early this afternoon, he called me with an idea for long-term improvement and cost savings for the district. This guy never quits. His visibility at district events will be sorely missed. He has answered every call made to him. His loyalty to this district is unquestioned, but his loyalty, I think, to his longtime friends in his home district won out. He cannot and should not be faulted for this. His contributions to Crestwood will never be forgotten. Also, he has promised to make the transition to the new administrator as smooth as possible, and I have no doubt that he will. We wish him well in his new role and are not looking forward to the day when we have to say goodbye. Any other board comments? Or the public? Academic programs, Mrs. Campbell?
Excuse me, Mr. Boone. A young man was standing up.
Hello, my name is Raymond Joseph, J-O-S-E-P-H. I live on 230 Bluestone Ave. And I came here today just to say a thank you to Mr. Mahalik as well. I'm an 11th grader here at Crestwood, and Mr. Mahalik has made a great impact on my life and many of my friends in this community. Whether it was his consistent attendance to school-related events, whether it was sports or National Junior Honor Society, for example, he pushed to create the Unified Track Program, which helped include everyone in our school community, or it was simply something like talking to students in the hallway, Mr. Mahalik always managed to include everyone in our community. He made a great effort for this school. To you, Mr. Mahalik, I just wanted to thank you and let you know that you will be missed at this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Academic programs, Mrs. Campbell?
Thank you. I am seeking approval for items one and two.
Comments from the board? Or the public? Co-curricular, Mr. Swank?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be seeking approval of items number one, two, and three.
And I believe on item two that no cost of the district should read, the district will provide transportation to and from the airport, just to be noted. Questions or comments from the board? Or the public?
Hey, good evening. I actually, I have a statement that came in from Ms. Emma Gaidish, class of 2023. She requested that we read this off. Hello, Mr. Boone. My, I'm sorry, my name is Emma Gaidish, and I am currently a junior who has played for the Crestwood Field Hockey Team since seventh grade. Recently, as you know, the position of head coach has been opened up, although there is no clear reason as to why. Coach Moratori has been part of the Crestwood Field Hockey Program for as long as I have been playing, and she was the first person to teach me field hockey when I attended the camp in fourth grade. She has always been very supportive, kind, and intelligent about the sport. I know that I am speaking for myself and many of my other teammates when I say that Coach Moratori has had a major impact on the program, and we think she deserves her position as head coach for the 2022-2023 fall season. Most of my team has played under her coaching for their entire high school field hockey career, and the juniors especially, we're hoping that she would be here for our senior season. She is very important to us and the rest of the team. I realize that you are voting tonight, and I hope that you take into consideration the players, since we are the ones most affected by this decision. I will not be able to attend the meeting tonight because of a prior field hockey commitment, but I would greatly appreciate this email being read to the board tonight in my absence. Although I don't have a vote, at least I can exercise my voice. Thank you, Emma Gaidish, class of 2023.
Thank you, Emma. Any other public input? Technology committee, Mrs. McCurdy?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Physical plant and construction, Mrs. Haddix?
There are no items for voting tonight.
Thank you. Positive behavioral intervention, Mrs. Bibla?
No report, Mr. Boone.
IU Unit 18?
Nothing new to report. The minutes are on file in the superintendent's office, and the next meeting is scheduled for January 26th, 6:30 PM, at the LIU auditorium.
Thank you. Wilkes-Barre Area Career and Technical Center? Mrs. McCurdy, or Mrs. Haddix?
Yes, no report at this time. The minutes are on file in the superintendent's office and the district website, and the next CTC meeting is Monday, January 24th, 2022, at CTC at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, any non-agenda items input from the board? And I know we have some comments from the public.
Hello again. I have several questions and statements that came in, so I'm going to start with the first one. This was from Megan Velo Zorzi. Good evening, first of all. I want to say that I appreciate all that the school board, administration, and staff has done last year to keep the children safe and educated. I appreciate it having the option to choose in-person or cyber school and felt very supportive with either decision. It felt as though both options were well-planned and executed, so again, thank you. During the past two summers prior to starting the school year, parents were sent surveys asking for our opinions on potential policies and changes such as with cyber. I found this to be a great way to assess all of the parents' opinions about issues. I was upset when I learned that the recent policy of spacing the students' seats was stopped prior to taking a survey on how all the parents in the district felt about it. It seems like only the parents who had early access to the information were able to respond and their opinions taken into account. COVID is a rapidly changing situation, and so my opinions along with science are constantly being updated. It would be great to be able to have a part in shaping the policies that affect our kids. Is it possible to continue with the survey so that everyone has the opportunity to respond? I would ask that, given the recent change in COVID, the mask mandate be reinstated. I am very concerned that we are going to have to quarantine many more children than is necessary, and keeping the kids in school is more important. I also think that KN-95 masks should be required and provided to children as cloth masks are ineffective. Thank you, and I appreciate your time, Ms. Megan Velo. The second statement is from Teresa Zorzi. I am asking Crestwood to reconsider its masking policy to mandatory masking in all its buildings and social distancing of students, teachers, staff, and visitors. These steps are urgently recommended by the CDC during this time of high transmission of the virus. Thank you for your time and consideration, Teresa Zorzi. And then, this next one is from Mike Velo Zorzi. To whom it may concern, I would like to first mention that I appreciate all of the hard work during the last two years in looking out for the safety of our students, their families, faculty members, and our community. I am sure it has been very difficult. I was also happy with the cyber options CSD provided as well, and ultimately feel you are focused on what is best for all students. I am concerned that a few loud voices are pressuring change or decisions that may not match the larger population's stance or opinion. Perhaps surveys can be used again to poll parents and community members as a data source to aid in making the best possible decisions, along with science and data that is provided by our government and medical professionals. I appreciate all of the hard work. Thanks, Mike. And then, the final one is from M. Cindy Loftus Vergara. I apologize if I kind of got the pronunciation wrong on that. As the parent of free Crestwood graduates and the grandparent of a current student, I would like to express my concern about several recent school board decisions. The decision to move from mandatory to optional masking is not based in science and exposes Crestwood students to the unnecessary risks of contracting and spreading COVID in the school and in our community. Additionally, while there may be a certain naive logic in separating students based on whether they are masked, this is a respiratory virus and still cannot be contained in this way. This approach may help to identify who must quarantine when an exposure occurs in a classroom, but it is unlikely to reduce exposure in other areas of the school. The obvious solution to eventually ending the pandemic lies in continuing mandatory masking, requiring the COVID vaccination of all students who are eligible and practicing social distancing to the extent that it is possible. My other grandchildren who live in other more enlightened school districts have continued to keep masking and social distancing in place. Please do not continue to pander to people who are unlo, I'm sorry, unwilling to take the simplest measures to protect our children and our community. Cynthia Loftus Vergari. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. No comments from the board? Excuse me? Okay. Okay. Seeing none, we will now go to the voting portion. Rule call.
Ms. Bibla?
Here.
Mr. Brogna?
Present.
Ms. McCurdy? Mr. Macri?
Present.
Mrs. Spath?
Here.
Mr. Swank?
Here.
Mrs. Campbell?
Here.
Mrs. Haddix?
Here.
And Mr. Boone?
Here.
Nine members present.
Okay. I will be seeking approval of the minutes of the regular board meetings of December 3rd, 16th, and 24th.
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any disapproval? None? Be seeking approval of the treasurer's report of December 2021?
Motion?
Second.
Rule call.
Ms. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Brogna?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yeah.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Mrs. Spath?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Haddix?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Financial planning, Mr. Brogna?
I'll be seeking a motion and approval for items one through eight.
Second.
Ms. Bibla? I recuse myself on item one for check ending in 912. Yes to the rest. Mr. Brogna?
I'll be recusing myself from check number 2520. Yes to all else.
Ms. McCurdy?
Yeah.
Mr. Macri?
Yes to all.
Mrs. Spath?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Haddix?
I recuse myself on checks number 2542, 2543, 2633, 2634. Yes to everything else.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Transportation, Mrs. Spath?
I'll be seeking a motion and approval for items one, A and B. Iso move?
Second. Ms. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Brogna?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yeah.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Mrs. Spath?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Haddix?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Policy, Mr. Macri?
Seeking approval and motion for consideration and approval of the policy updates, A and B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Human resources, Mrs. Bibla?
I'll be seeking a motion for items one through 10. Iso move?
Second. Second?
Ms. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Brogna?
Regrettably, to three, four, and five, the exemplary service of these individuals, but I vote yes to all.
Mrs. Macri? I'm sorry, Mrs. McCurdy?
Yeah.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Mrs. Spath?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Haddocks?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
I recuse myself on item number six. Yes to all others.
Motion carried?
Academic programs? Mrs. Campbell?
Thank you. I am seeking a motion and approval of items one and two. Motion? Second?
Ms. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Brogna?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy?
Yeah.
Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Mrs. Spath?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Haddocks?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Co-curricular, Mr. Swank?
Thank you, Mr. Boone. I'd like to make a motion to approve items one through three, and as noted earlier, item number two, the district will provide transportation costs to and from the airport.
Second?
Ms. Bibla?
Yes.
Mr. Brogna?
Yes.
Mrs. McCurdy? Mr. Macri?
Yes.
Mrs. Spath?
Yes.
Mr. Swank?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Haddocks?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carried?
Thank you again, Board of Education. I have one other announcement. This just came in to me, so I apologize if I would have included this. If you pay attention to our marquee outside the secondary campus, you'll see on one of the advertisements, a Mason Strong symbol. That Mason is Mason Gerton. Mason Gerton is a sophomore here at Crestwood, and he is a strong kid, okay? Very, very strong. He would, I mean, he'd hurt both of us if he wanted to in a football game or a wrestling match. Mason was injured in a football game, JV football game, and was taken to doctors. It was an injury on his knee, not thinking much of it. And as his mother shared, and I know she will be fine with me sharing this, our trainer didn't feel comfortable because it was just not healing the way that he thought it should be healing. And so, our trainer suggested an MRI, and that MRI determined that there was a tumor. It was a very, very rare tumor, and it was in a very delicate place with Mason's leg. I am so, so happy to announce that the surgery, which was done at Children's Hospital of Philadelphia, was successful. However, Mason still has a lot of mending to do. I know for without question, Mason will be playing football next year better than ever, but in the meantime, he still has a road ahead of him. So, this February 5th of 2022 is going to be Mason Gerton Day, and I'd like to read this. Mason Gerton Day at Pizza Bella, Mountain Top. No surprise, a Pizza Bella is a part of anything Mountain Top related. They're asking us to come celebrate Mason's birthday early with 100% of the proceeds above food costs going to Mason's family to help with medical bills. Eat in, take out, have it delivered, help us make this a huge success. So, I'm asking everyone, the entire area, doesn't matter if you live in Mountain Top area or attend our school, Mason and his family are just really special people. This is an amazing event, and there are still, again, some things ahead for Mason, and this would go a long way in helping him. So, Mason's in all of our prayers, all of our thoughts, and we can't wait to see him in these hallways and certainly in the weight room and on that football field. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. At this time, we'd be seeking a motion for adjournment?
Motion?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for attending.